Meeting is called, uh, seven oh one.
Joyce Mann.
Uh, Chris.
Bill Cooper.
Here.
Will Barrett.
Here.
Ira Hawkins.
Here.
Okay, first on the agenda is approval of minutes from April fourteenth and April sixteenth of two thousand fifteen.
I'll make a motion to accept the approval of minutes of April fourteenth and April sixteenth of two thousand fifteen.
The second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a vote. All in favor? Four and up. Okay. First of all business is to adopt the new ordinance presented by our attorney. Basically, what this ordinance does is change the old ordinance where there was a number placed per the population that is no longer even recognized by the state. It was opened up some time ago where the number of licenses, there are no limits. It's got to come before the Board of Aldermen for approval. We're going to put it in act within the next, probably at the next meeting, get an application for such. It will be at the board's discretion. Any questions?
So in short, there is no state laws regarding this as up to the city councils to have any licenses for liquor they give.
Yes. Basically, just adopting the state's ordinance. If there are no questions from anyone or the board, I guess.
So we can't do anything tonight until we get a bill number in? Or can we go ahead and accept this tonight?
Do we have to read something?
We can do it on the first reading, but it wasn't posted in the paper or anything, so there will have to be a second reading at the next regularly scheduled meeting where that council bill number, ordinance number, gets it.
Is there a charge for liquor license?
Yes, there is.
Would you want it to be, enter for it to be different if it was for like liquor by the drink or package liquor?
In fact, it is.
Okay, I didn't know that.
That'd have to be a different charge and all that.
Jared did put that together. It was open for interpretation on the pricing. There is a state, I apologize for kind of impaired on this, there is a, basically a mathematical as to how much product you sell as opposed to the maximum you can charge for the way it's set up. Like say, we don't have a surprise, so maybe we should table this until the next bill and we can actually ordinate the bill number where there is a suggested amount for each license. It's up to the council.
I wouldn't make a motion.
Sure.
Didn't my attorney say something about that with his license, like seventy-five, twenty-five?
Yeah, that's the way the state charges on and the city can basically go off the same math or how it is.
I forget what the numbers was and it seems like seventy-five percent of these foods.
Seventy-five percent, that's what he said.
And what the attorney had actually suggested was it was quite a bit lower than what the state, your maximum of the state. So like I say, at this point, it's up to you guys if you want to do this all at once with, have it all in the ordinance and the bill, the bill number and all that stuff. That'd probably be the best, I hate to keep kicking this down the road here.
I make a motion to table this for now until the next council meeting. We'll have everything in order with the bill number and everything from the city attorney.
As far as, I wouldn't see a problem if I had any questions about this ordinance. We'd like to see it. You can request to see what we're doing at this point, so if anybody.
We can post a copy.
Yeah, yeah, that'd probably be a good idea. Like I say, we'll get the rest of the information. I'll get it from Jared tomorrow. We'll have it all over. Everything in line and if we do advertise this, we can do it all at the next meeting and it will go into effect immediately. I know we've got a motion. And a second. All in favor of tabling this until the next scheduled meeting? Four and up. Okay, new business, the first item is discussion of adopting an application for liquor license. I have looked at myself online, the city Joplin's, the Upshows, all of them. It is a, it's pretty in-depth. Some of them, and I think it would be a good idea with us doing what we're doing as far as not putting a limit on it. And I know the state does it, but I think for our own, to cover our own, vigorously speaking, hind end, they do a background check, check to make sure that this person doesn't know the status or any back taxes, all of this. We can put together, bring in several examples, kind of put this together for the future. I think it will only be good, we're opening everything up for the sake of revenue, but I want to assure that we're not just handing them out. We'll put some copies of this stuff together and I'll get it to you guys in the next couple of days, kind of staying through it, put the ideas we want together, then present it to the city attorney and have him actually put something together that will withstand a legal argument. Any questions from anybody on that? If not, we'll move on to number two, which is basically the same thing, but we do have a sample here in front of us. It's an application for city grantee business license. Up to this point, this is something that I'd like you all to think about and most certainly open to input. Up to this point, we've just, people come down, put their name on the agenda, come before us, ask for business license. We say yea or nay, more times than not, it's yea. And I want to encourage people to encourage capitalism and people to come into our town and open businesses. But I think we need, once again, just like the liquor license, I think we need to know who is in our town and doing business and how they're doing. And the way a lot of other communities do this is they fill this out. Once again, it's a check to see if there's any state taxes owed by the individual or the company or the corporation or whatever. If everything checks out, then basically it's, the way a lot of the other surrounding communities do it, the mayor or the city administrator signs off on it and they go ahead and just issue the license. It doesn't have to go before the Board of Aldermen. It's just, it's cut and dried, it's over. You know, the process takes a couple of days. I know with Newt County, you go down, you fill out the app, in ten minutes, you've got your business license to do, business in Newt County. I think if we do this and we're diligent about it and do the proper background checks and everything, it will free us up as a council of this and we'll make sure that we have a good relationship with the people that are doing business in our town. Like I say, all of you've got a sample of it. It's kind of taken off, basically, I think, our, it did off our peddler's license. The only thing I see, they've got social security number and all that. I mean, it's, if any of you've got ideas that need to be added to or wants to investigate this, could be online or however, to see how the cities do it. But I really think it would be in the best interest of the city to look at doing this. And we need to keep these on file. As far as people that have already got their business license, when they renew them, just have them fill one out, put it on file, in case there's ever any issues come up in the future.
Will you be hiring an outside agency or entity to do the background checks or will you be doing it yourself?
Uh, that will probably take up the city attorney and see how, the best way to do that. Like I say, this is just, you know, step one in the process, but I just feel like that we're.
Has there been, has there been problems?
Well, not that I know of. I mean, I just, I, when you call around to the surrounding communities, we're the only ones that's not there. And I mean, as far, you know, I just think it makes things legitimate. I mean, at this point, the only concern is, is taking their money and giving them a piece of paper and if someone comes in to town, God forbid, who does a bunch of state taxes and stuff and then they do us the same way. Revenue's what keeps us alive and we want to make sure everyone's running a legit business. And when you kind of do a background check, you see where they've been, see what they've done.
Do we monitor, do we monitor revenues coming in from businesses as far as what taxes are paid? Is there something to send to us as a city?
I believe.
Yes, there is.
Mr. Mayor, would it, would it behoove us somewhere on here to have maybe some business recommendations about that business? There's nowhere on here for recommendations or.
Recommendations?
Yeah, you know what? If they, let's say they were in Wisconsin and they moved to our area and they wanted to open up their business. We don't know them at all, but if they had a recommendation from maybe another business in that town or from their Better Business Bureau or whoever, that would give us a little better idea.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's for sure, we want that included in there because that's basically what we want to do. So I don't want someone coming into town setting up shop that has been in fifteen different states and.
Been run out of.
Been run out of fifteen different states. I mean, that's just.
Yeah, I mean, anything could possibly happen. You could have somebody collecting beanies for a period of time and when someone needs to do a service or needs a service, they could look at their trailer house and whatever, do the business side of it's gone, long gone. I can see where this could be beneficial.
That's just another way of protecting the city and all the citizens. Yes.
So what's the E gonna be for a business license?
Uh, you know, it will stay the same this year. We'll just have to revisit it on increase. I know right now, we're probably one of the cheapest in the area. Yes, sir.
Well, you certainly don't want to saddle a brand new business with unnecessary burden, but I don't think some, some things are going to hurt anybody, anybody that's legitimate as a mind, background check or.
Well, you go to Newt County, it costs you ten bucks. It's all cost you.
I was gonna say, if, when we grant liquor license and all, that's gonna be a different charge reg, than just a regular business license.
Oh, yes. And if a little, it's my understanding and I don't see it reappointed, you won't have to have both. You'll have to have this and then your liquor license on also. You get licensed to death in a county and a state and all that.
If I understand that right, I think that when you're serving liquor by the drink, those regulations by the state are pretty high.
Yes.
You have, you have to serve a lot of food and your income has to be pretty high. That could benefit the city's part of general revenue because they have to pay anything to do with the state, not necessarily us.
No, we have, our revenue report is monthly, so am I correct in that quarterly?
Quarterly.
Quarterly. So with the councils, good blessing, if you guys will just come look this over. Any ideas, like I said, investigate, ask questions, and we'll hammer this out. And once again, if anyone would like to see.
Will that be on the, for people to read?
Yeah, that's what, you know, I'm saying. I mean, this is just kind of a rough graph.
Yes, sir. I was thinking in the past that the reason our, our business licenses are this cheap as it is is because of seven oh. We raised it at one time from two fifty-five dollars and it ended back down to the proposed amount.
I know it was raised within the last year, so because now it's.
Ten.
I mean. In all honesty, I mean, the, if you do this and you do it correct and we actually do it like we should, the girls in the office will probably spend an hour doing it. I don't want to put a burden on anybody, but.
Simple words, if you can afford ten dollars for a business license, you don't need to be in business security.
Bill, I can't believe you said such an ugly thing.
There I am.
There you go.
Look, you can't have somebody sitting down there in the office going over.
Yeah, we can't. I mean, we've got to use our time wisely. We've got to, you know, so, I mean, in my honest opinion, two fifty-five, even ten dollars is, I mean, that's, that's, that's no money.
Ten dollars is cheap for a business license.
Yeah. I mean, by the time, I don't know what those business licenses cost, that's a fee, because by the time you do the paperwork, we sit here approve it and all that, I mean, it's, but we'll visit that again when we get a little closer with this. Anybody got anything else on this topic? Okay. We will move on to number three. Our city attorney met with the new board at the last meeting to go over issues that pertain to some of the legal situations we're involved in with right now. We felt that it was pertinent to go ahead and reappoint him for the year. I don't personally care for votes in closed session, but with the situation that the way it was, we deemed it necessary. So just for everyone's information, he was reappointed. Who it was for now? See if anybody got anything on that?
Was it the second D?
Yes.
Mainly no increase.
Yes. No increase in anything. Bill tried his best to talk him down.
He wouldn't do.
Easy. Okay. Number four, discussion of TIF board progress and what is the plan for Magnus Bar and overall goals for the next year? Gee, who's on the TIF board? Oh, wait a minute. You gotta be on the sheriff.
I need, Kayla, if you will tomorrow, or Joanne, whoever, I need to verify the number, the phone number that I have for Daryl, because again, I've sent in four messages and I have not yet had an answer. So I don't know if I've got the right number. But somehow. Somehow we've got to get a hold of him.
Does he have email?
Yeah, does he have email?
If he does, I don't have that.
It might be easier to get a hold of him.
Actually, do you by any chance?
I've never had an email address for him. I imagine he has.
I will, I will check with Gloria at Burley tomorrow. If anybody, like she probably would have. I would think.
Yeah.
Or I'll get a hold of somebody. I'll get a hold of the mayor if you offer him or something. Because he's not always been working there.
Yes, he is.
Yep.
Well, I'd just like to see us meet with him at least once and find out the, once again, look at this and go out like we got it on our minds. We need to move forward on this as soon as possible and we need to get some of these projects started, finished and behind us.
Verification, verification time.
Yep.
Locks ticking.
We're, based on my recollection, we're five years, so I can't emphasize enough how much we need to stay focused on this.
Probably we as a council and also along with the TIF board need to have a, not only a short-term goal for the TIF, even that, the goal that would finish us out to the end.
Yeah.
That probably needs to at least be set in stone somewhere and then just advanced in that direction.
There is a list that was handed down to me and from years back when I first got on there and all, when Donna was on there and Bud White, Jackie Cameron, other ones and all, they set priorities, known as they was achieved, they was marked off, but there's still, you know, plenty of you left. Bob Park is one.
We always need to. We need to.
I found the O standard book on the, on the TIF and we all used to meet of what the main criteria was.
We probably ought to, as a council, with as long, as well as the TIF, sit down, have a, have a meeting and just, and set our goals. And like I say, up to this point, what's discouraging, I think you'll have to agree, Bill, we're looking at so many projected numbers and you can't, at this point, go off. I don't think there's been actually a reprojection since the original deal and the way it's set up, which I preached about that before, was things to be done and a steady increase of revenue and it's been so up and down and up and down that I can't see the original projection really being anywhere close to what it is. So we really need to sit down, look at this realistically, get a number and then, and I know, once again, I think you'll agree, we've, over the last year, since I've become involved in this, and by no means, I'm not throwing Daryl under the bus, but at one meeting, we can do this and at the next meeting, we can't. And I want writing and I want us to know, so when we move forward, that we don't have to contact him constantly. The only thing we have to contact him for is just the final approval and move forward. Because I think as a council, we're sitting here ready to go and.
There are, there are a few things probably in that TIF agreement originally, probably you can start putting shelves, Magnus Bar is one of them, and I think everybody was agreeing that on, just where it got stopped, I don't know.
Well, I mean, the shame about it is.
When Joplin's business deal started, that's when everything stopped.
Well, the, the shame about our form of government is, you know, you're elected to a two-year term and then every year, there's a. Change, different cast of characters and what's important to one council won't be another and then obviously, the things that we're faced with here, and there's not a real good understanding about what the TIF can be used for, because we've all heard it, you know, why are we spending money on this when we could be using that money for the sewer? We can't do it. I mean, it's just like taxes for parks and recreation. If we want to spend money on improvements in one of those areas, I know a lot of people is going to think, why are you spending this money on that when we go to the sewers? Well, taxes collected for a specific purpose and that's all we can use it on. So I think it's kind of asinine for us to sit on our hands if we have money to spend on something and for us to just sit and dwell on the obvious problem that we've got, but you know, we're all going to be, have to multitask and have to work through this and, you know, I'm sitting here and I promise you all improvements and we're going to have them. It's, we're just, we're getting off to a little bit of a rocky, slow start here, I mean, but we're, we're working in the right direction on it and I have faith we will. So let's see, you get a hold of him, I'll get a hold of him, we'll get something set up in the next, let's set a goal to have something in the next two weeks to where we can honestly.
I was gonna say, if I get a hold of him tomorrow or the next day, whenever, can anybody give me a date of how quick you want to try to get a meeting?
About eight o'clock tonight. We'll do it today.
I ain't got it.
Just as soon as possible.
Okay.
We want to do this. Like I say, that's, what I would ask of you all is to, and I know there is a copy of the TIF, the original TIF agreement, to, to get copies of, to everyone to go over it, look at it and it's, it's easy to sit and talk about, but after you read it all, you'll get a whole new understanding of what the initial plan was and how beneficial it could have been. And there's still a lot of benefits too, but we've got to get on board, get in the saddle and ride and we can't, but if you all will do that in the next couple of days, get a copy of that, read through it, kind of get up to speed on what, what it is. So when we do meet with him, we can have intelligent questions to ask and hold him to his answer, so that there's no more, well, we don't know. And like I say, nothing against the man, I've just met him a couple of times, I like him, but it's, it's kind of like calling the IRS, depending on who you talk to, what answer you're getting. Okay, I'll shut up about that. Anything else?
So you don't have any correct plans at all or you're trying to figure out if Mr. Gross is going to sign off on this or what?
Well, the, what I want to see is, this is my idea behind it. We need a new plan, something that fits what's going on right now, not what fits eighteen years ago. Times have changed, things have changed, the city's needs have changed. We need to address a current plan that will work for the city, that will benefit. As I say, guys, this is our last go around on this bill. I mean, we could reapprove another TIF, but if it's not given any more consideration, I mean, initially, the way it's set up is, okay, this TIF's going to produce hypothetically, and don't hold me to this number because I'm just coming off with two million dollars over twenty-three years, the way most, and this is why Joplin's hurting right now, because they didn't plan it out. But you go to a lending institution and you borrow two million dollars and you put your plan into action and it's, it keeps you a good employee because you know, at the end of the road, you've got to pay that money back. If you don't, the thing about it is something that concerned me with the last meetings with Mr. Gross was, he wasn't real specific on his numbers and he was throwing tens and twenty thousand. twenty thousand dollars around like we throw around ones and fives. And the hard reality to this, at the end of this program, if we right now went, because he threw a number around four or five hundred thousand dollars, if, if the revenue's not there at the end of the road, the bill gets handed to the city. We have to make up the difference. So that's why you can't be lax about it. You've got to see the number and by God, believe in it, because if not, it's going to cause you problems at the end of it. It's kind of like a high-interest credit card. Sure, it's a lot of fun to use, but at the end of the day, it kind of hurts to pay. So, but like I say, the city's needs have changed and, and we need to address them. And something else is, we need to set this plan up as a long-term goal and stick with it and possibly, and I'll be honest, I don't know the legalities of this, possibly set it up in an ordinance so that a year from now, if we change, that we see it through, that it's not a, well, I don't want that.
He did not hear no one.
Yeah. So, so we've got to set this up and keep the ones that follow us on point.
Travis, on the original draft, is it the parameters we need to stay in when they've decided what needed, what the city needed as far as the helps? And what, even though times have changed, don't we need to stay within those parameters?
Iron.
Buildings or?
Well, that comes back to, initially, the first talk I had with him was the city bar, building a new one. He told me, standing outside this building or not, that we couldn't do that, because we hadn't spent any money on it. Well, three weeks later, he's saying we can, and recommending that we go outside the city limits and purchase a building that's already standing. And then, I mean, it's just, like I say, this wishy-washy, you know, and, well, I can't do this, well, now we can. And it's, like I say, I don't, I'm not criticizing him at all, but, you know, what I'm worried about is Graham. And if he can't give me an honest opinion, then I need to talk to someone who can, and I want a write, because I don't want us to write a check that we can't cash. And like I said, there's been too many numbers right now. I mean, it's just like the, the community building out there. Well, you guys are going to spend four hundred thousand dollars on it, you've got to put a fire system in it, you've got to put new floor in. And then, as the conversation goes on, well, you only have to do that if you're going to have, you know, twenty thousand people in it. Well, I don't see AC/DC coming to town and putting on a concert in there. I mean, it could happen, but.
Drummers going to prison.
Yeah. But, so, I want to know the, the, you know, don't just throw a general idea out here and me take it to the bank. I mean, I want to know what, it's just been kind of too much off the cap and I.
You just want to nail down the information.
I'm probably going out on a limb here, but this, this program has been so lax, and I'm not blaming anybody for it. It's just, it's been so lax for so long, and he's got a lot of these going. I, I don't, I feel that if we start moving on it and making progress on it, he'll give it more attention and we'll get some harder answers. But it's just like the guy that calls you ten times on the car, you go for sale. After about the fifth time, you just blow it off. And I think that's what's happened here.
I think he will get agrees. Like you're saying there, when you, you know, some of the other things you had with him and all, I took and reminding, Darrell, listen, now, I've been on this for X number of years, and this is what we was told by you, that we had to make a list of priorities, knowing that, like I've said before, as we do them, we check them off. But you also took and told us, you can't add anything to this list after a year, or five years, or three years, or whatever and all. So now, this has already been on the list, now you're saying that we can't take into it. You know, where are we at? Well, he said, that's right, he said, I forgot about that and all. Yeah, that, that's the way it's got to be, you know?
The, that was then, this is now, it's not a good answer. So we'll, we'll get him out there if we have the time up in the form. We have ways of getting him if you feel.
Yep.
Okay, there's more discussion on this topic.
After, after the six years, there's anything asked of, does that money go away or can you keep?
The money goes back to where it was taken from, which is the East Newton School there.
Well, if there's anybody left in, you can't keep it, you can't keep it.
Goes back.
Goes back to the school.
Goes back to the school. And I would like to see a little bit more interest in the board. I know in meetings before, there's some people on the board that, I've been to limited meetings, just a couple, that I know there's some people that I haven't even seen there. I hate to go out on a limb here and say this, but if they're not that interested in it, we need to see by procedure how we need to change members to get people that are interested in that, because this is our community and we're trying to better it. And if people aren't interested in participating in this, then we need to make a move to get people that are. Get on the boat or get off of it.
Travis.
Yes.
How are the members that are currently on there, were they appointed by the city council, or is there an application, or how does that process?
I'll be honest, I'm kind of sketchy on some of this. I, I do know, Bill will probably answer this possibly better, I do know there are requirements.
There has to be some.
Personnel that are on there, there has to be a, an alderman on there, there has to be.
Superintendent.
Superintendent, a school board member, a member of the county on there, and then one or two. Well, somebody from that office. And then a citizen. So there are some requirements for it. I would be telling you a tall tale if I told you exactly how you go about removing or adding, but I will find that out.
Who's the current citizen that's on the board right now?
He's sitting right there.
Ashley.
Ashley. Okay.
So the ones that are, like, Doug Gerrell has passed away, has anybody been appointed to replace him?
Mike Franks.
Mike Franks, okay.
He's on it, then Gloria Gurley, Ashley, myself.
Mark Knight.
Mark Knight, Todd McCracken.
Gloria Gurley.
Yeah, Gloria Gurley. I believe that's the end of it, isn't it, actually?
That's the only ones I've seen in meetings.
Yeah. That's the only ones that's been there anyway.
Produce some checking on that. We'll, we'll, this is going to reel in soon. Okay, if there's not any more questions on anything, let's move on. Discussion Employee Handbook. All the members of the board were given a copy of the Employee Handbook. I hope y'all had some, excuse me, to look it over. If there was any thing glaring that anyone was in question of, wanted to see changed, thought needed to be updated, we'll just kind of kick this around a little bit. I personally think there's some things that are left too wide open, as far as the way part-time, full-time, all that stuff is addressed. Couple other minor things, nothing real glaring. But I would like to see, and I'd, I'll almost bet, I'd like to see all new employees handed a copy of this, asked to read, given the authority to read it, then sign something stating that they had read.
I've got, where I found Cadillacs, the city letterhead and everything on it, stating that for the employee that you gave them the handbook, they read it.
Yeah, we should.
They signed it.
That way, there's no, there's no, I didn't know. And if they didn't know, it's, they didn't read it. And ignorance used in Webster's term, ignorance is not excuse.
It's the same, there was another form with it, I found, for drug procedures to drug testing, where they are aware that we are drug testing them.
I think that's kind of been lax for some time. I'd like to see that tightened up for everyone has an understanding.
I'll give it to you tomorrow.
Of the city's policies. And a copy of the, the form that they signed is to be put in their file, in case there's ever any questions.
Does the city not do random drug checks anymore?
Yeah, we do. That's something I'd like to change a little bit, the way that's done here. We'll set this up in the time.
Is, Travis, is there not a current employee orientation that's required for each employee before they start, such as getting the handbook, acknowledging it, acknowledging drug testing, acknowledging, signing off that they're having a background check? Is, is there not anything that's done before they actually start work?
I'll tell you the truth, you want me to spin something off?
I want you to tell me the truth.
Tell us the truth.
No, no, there's none. Come on, I'll.
But that's what we're saying now.
That's what we're.
It's going to, it should have been mandatory, but it will be mandatory.
You are a water board, but we don't talk about that.
Okay.
But we need to, as, as, how do you flatly put this? As unhandy sometimes as this is, we need to be brought into the 21st century on a lot of this.
Absolutely.
It's been too long, you know, and we've got some great city employees, we do. But we need to, I just feel like we're leaving our pants down in a lot of areas and it's time that stops. I mean, if you can't go get a job, throw in the job and load, you have to fill out more paperwork than you do to work to sit here. So it's time we, we move.
We got to.
And like I say, there'll be some growing pains on this. I know it's going to be some more paperwork for, for department heads and for the girls at city hall. Necessary, yes, sir.
I think I remember, it's been about two years, and I can't remember the gentleman's name, but the insurance company, that we did some major review of the employee handbook. So I agree, it is probably due time to review that. Along that same line, I'd like to request for the council to consider an introduction of a non-fraternization policy to be included into the handbook as well.
There is one.
Is there? I didn't believe there was, okay. Well, that's good. Well, then we should enforce it.
That's why I'd like to say, I want everyone to read it, understand it. There will be a test at the end of this. To be 250 multiple choice answers.
Do you have a copy of this employee handbook, say, at the city hall, for anyone interested?
Yes, we do. And I want to be clear, anyone that feels so inclined to see any paperwork that has to do with city agreements, there's something you can't see. But as far as monthly reports, from our sewer guy, from our police chief, from Kevin, from, from anybody, we're open. You know, you can, unless it is, there is a legal aspect of it, it will be open record. We're going to be friendly, we're going to be accommodated. Right now, obviously, we're a little shorthanded, so if you come down and want something, you might have to give us a little time, but we'll give. I want, you know, the word transparency has been so abused in the past few years, but that's what I want to see. If you guys got a question, you need to ask. We're spending your money, and you need to know where it's going, you need to know why it's going there, and that's the only way you'll know. And I don't want somebody to come up and complain about the way things are being spent and me say, well, don't worry about it. You don't need to know it. You just need to know a gap, I hate to point a phrase, but you'll never hear that from me.
Has the, has the city attorney looked at the employee handbook? I mean, he's, he's reviewed it?
I know that he did two years ago, when we, the last meeting.
Now, I think the problem with a lot of that over the years has been that, that we hire a company or whatever to, to, I think those are basically generalized, you know, and we probably, and I can't say this for a fact, but we probably never really sat down and critiqued it, because every city's a little different. I mean, the law's the law, city, county, state, whatever, but every city will have a little different, the way they handle certain things. But things like overtime, things like part-time, full-time, that's pretty much a state standard. And, and it's just like it's legalized and this, but, you know, we've got so many ordinances in this town that have way outlived their usefulness, way out of it. And we need to address these little by little and, and get it back to where, we're not keeping the town down from revenue or from progress or growth, whether it be residential, commercial, whatever, because of an ordinance that I, you know, I can look through the ordinance book, and I've been gone for twenty years, but I can look through the ordinance book and I can see a lot of them, and I can remember exactly who they were designed for, you know, whether it be good or bad. Those need to be removed. I mean, there, there's no sense in, you know, we sit around here and complain about our growth and our revenue and all that stuff. Hell, we've done it ourselves. You know, it's time we, we don't, we don't look at specific people and try to design something, make them better or hold them back. I, I just, that is appalling, I mean, I can sit here and bitch about that all night. So let's move on.
I have one thing, Travis.
Sure.
Have, have you guys considered, it is public knowledge, correct, the employee handbooks? Have you considered reaching out to any of the other cities to get a copy of their?
I have, I have.
That's a good guideline.
Yeah. I'll tell you what, there's, there's probably a few cities that are damn tired of hearing from me, as far as asking how they do things and, and trying to throw all the ideas into one and, and just, you know, the only way you learn is asking, so. Okay.
You get a business second, you'll know.
Yeah. Yeah. That's one of the, call them unknown. Update on applications for court. Court.
April 16, 2015.
Well, Bill, let's hear that again. Did we just go through that?
Go ahead. Living right along.
Where do you get a crack?
Modernity technology.
They're away from me.
Yeah. High and air super parent here.
Yeah, Walmart's.
What you said, you're shaking your head, you don't even know what I'm going to ask. Do we have any applications for court clerks? We do not. Something else is brought to my attention by the guy in yellow shirt, sitting to the west of me. Are we still running ads in the New York Daily News for anything?
Yes, there was three in there yesterday. Waste water, police, settlement.
In Sunday's paper, there was two in there and all, wastewater and city clerk.
Globe, I didn't have, had the police.
Pardon?
The Globe had the police applications.
Yeah, and if you had a, might have found the last you could read it too.
Really, that one, yes, definitely. I called and talked to her.
So we have no, no apps for that? We're sorry. Okay, I guess we will continue our search in that endeavor for another week. Any questions, comments here? Okay, discussion on meeting with Taylor and Green on October 23, 2015. April, what was I saying? It's quite a while back. I knew what was going to happen. Okay, I met with Brad Heather and Nancy, the 23rd. The discussion was where we needed to go, what we needed to do, what they could do for us, what they would do for us. Very good discussion. They gave me several ideas on where they thought we needed to start. The first thing. The first thing was to basically, and I don't know if I'm using the proper terminology here, but basically reconcile the audit with our city books. Was number one. Number two was to prepare this year's books for the audit that will be coming, so we don't end up in the same boat. Brad's goal was to, and he said it was, it was going to be a task, but to have this year, that we're currently in fiscal year, books prepared for audit by August. Sounds like a achievable goal. The, the next thing was, you know, there, there's a whole list of options here. We discussed fees. Obviously, when we get new city clerk in, there's gonna be a learning curve there. As far as the quick books, Nancy felt very confident she could come in and give you girls everything you need to know. They suggested a, you know, he actually, he said, well, it depends on what you guys wanna spend on how much time we spend there, timelines. My reply was, well, hell, the first thing you're gonna have to do is tell us how much we can spend. So, my, personally, my first goal would be to, to get the books reconciled, to not only work on getting it ready for the, the audit that's coming, that's gonna be here before we know it, two months, we're done with this fiscal year. Also, to help in the, and we're gonna have to start the square one on a budget. I don't wanna use anything we've used before, we're gonna need some input on this. And to do basically just a cleanup on everything, get everything where we know, because I'll be honest, at this point, we're shooting from our hip, uh, we're living day to day, and I am, I've never been so uncomfortable in my life. As to whenever, uh, there's checks right here that need to be signed, and, uh, it's just a very uncomfortable feeling, and we've gotta get this squared around. His, his rate for this on the audit, uh, I believe he said it was a hundred point five, a hundred fifty an hour or something, to that note, uh, for what they're gonna be doing, be seventy-five dollars an hour for what he's proposing to do. The hours that they spend will be what we can afford. I would suggest, and also Nancy said that, like on a lot of these, you know, short questions, something, we're messing with quick books, you got a question, quick, whatever, she said, we're not gonna charge you for a five or 10 minute conversation. If it turns into a half hour deal, obviously, we will. But, uh, there'll be a phone call away, they're 10 minutes away, uh, they're still obviously gonna be helping us on payroll, things like that, so they will be seen around the office. The time is now. So, I think that, uh, in my opinion, we're in a corner. We've, we've gotta do it, in my opinion. Yes, ma'am.
So, they don't have any definite ballpark figure of what they were charged to come over to do?
I don't thank God he self-proclaimed. I mean, it's gonna be, he, he suggested that.
But basically, they're on charge seventy-five dollars an hour. That's really not bad, not for an accounting firm.
If everybody could put their phones on silent, please. We'll probably have to, uh, you know, do the math initially, agree on like, you know, 15 to 20 hours a month. I think they're gonna make the best of their time, but like I say, guys, we gotta get this straightened up. It's, it's becoming a, you know, we've got a million little problems going on right now and a million big ones, and until we know where we stand, we've just, we've gotta bite the bullet on this. And it will, it will take some, some of the burden on the you girls on some of this. And I have often thought, and in my calling, you know, very few city entities do payroll within, uh, anymore. They, they farm that out, just, just because. You're kinda leaving yourself wide open. One of the biggest, longest discussions we had, and if I don't get anything done in the next two years, we're gonna cut these checking accounts down to many. This, I mean, my God, this is the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen in my life, and it takes two hours to do a five minute job.
If they didn't furnish the pens in here in that cup, I couldn't afford to buy my own ink pen for the checks I've signed. The meetings that we get.
In all seriousness, I would like to know what we spend on checks in a year.
In time.
That alone is just, I mean, and like I said, that kinda brings up another point here, just where, you know, if we get all this going on quick books and all that stuff, a lot of problems when they're entered as far as, as the bill paying procedures, they will show as an outstanding, and the way I want this to move forward, it's the only way we can move forward. It comes back to the 21st century thing, where we have a monthly statement in front of us, all the department heads do, where you constantly monitor your budget. So, if there's a spike in it for some reason, you know, and you see it as it's happening. One of the budgets I've seen from the city nearby, within a hundred miles of here, they have where you were at last year at this time, where you're at currently, and where the end of the road's gonna be, so you know, and it also shows you where you were a year ago at that time. So, you see any increase, decrease, and that way you can constantly monitor your budget, whether it's fuel cost, or whether it's a water line repair, or whether it's diesel fuel, or whether it's whatever, you can see and keep track of it, because it's awfully easy to let, I mean, you let a hundred bucks a month slide by in every department, that's a lot of money at the end of the year, and the way it's currently done, God only knows how much money's falling through the cracks in the floor, just because not being diligent, keeping an eye on it. And we, as a council, have got to stay on top of this, but it's got to be something that is user-friendly, and I want posted every month then, where anybody that comes in can see where we're at, what we're spending, why we're spending. I mean, it's just, the, the more open and the more, uh, user-friendly all this stuff is, it can only improve, it can only improve. Uh, like I say, we're gonna spend some money on this, because we basically sit around here and are, and with no offense to anyone, our accounting practices are 1960, and we've just got to, to, to move with it and, and live up to date, and it will be, it will make a job in the office. You're gonna be all right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Anyway, I'm losing the crowd. But it'll, it'll only make things a lot better, and, and it's gonna be, like I say, it's gonna be a kind of a painful process and a lot of relearning. But I'll tell you what, a year from now, everybody will sit here and say, why, and hell, didn't we do this year? It would be that good. I mean, I've, I've seen these programs in action, and it will free up time for the city clerk, the girls in the office. I mean, like I say, it will be, everybody's just gotta be open to this change, and the old ways, that's all they are, is old, we gotta move on. Sir.
Mr. Taylor, I, I mean, Brad Taylor, is that his name? He made in February a request, after he got the audit, he paid tax, he made for the audit. He made a request for the City of Grandy's business to do the bookkeeping. Is that what you were thinking of doing then?
The city did it?
No, he was asking, he was asking essentially, saying, I'm tired of doing the auditing job for you. I would like to be your book, I would like to be your bookkeeper, if you find another audit.
He has disqualified himself as being our, doing our audit. And basically, we done that to him, when after the audit was done, he was no longer legally bound to do our audit, 'cause the contract was up. Okay, we needed him, his firm, to help us through payroll and a couple of respawns. As soon as he done that, he disqualified himself.
From the audit.
From, from doing our audit, yes.
But he is looking for your business, or at least that's what I thought I heard, uh, asking to be the City of Grandy's bookkeeper then, or council.
He was offering the help. I mean, he has a grandstand for it. I think to this point, we've got one bid on our audit. Uh, he also offered his service in, and I know a lot of towns do this also, is where they will send letters out to auditing firms requesting a bid, not just posting. He said himself that that's the way he gets most of his business, is people requesting a, a bid for the audit. He said that he would assist us in that endeavor. He's also, uh, I brought this up earlier, he's also offered his assistance, and I think it would be very, very wise to do this in the application process, the interview process of our city clerk. He's offered to do a short interview on all the applicants, so to give us his take on their accountability abilities. Obviously, I think that's a good idea, we need, we need CPAs, you know.
So, he's asking for your business, but he's also wanting to help you get other bids from others.
Yeah.
And since you are pretty well mowing it over that.
Yeah, and I mean, I think with his experience with the City of Grandy, doing the, the audit for the last three years, and then he clarified something with me on the audits he'd done for Grandy in the years past. Uh, he had acquired a small auditing company that was actually doing Grandy's, is how he was involved in initially, some years back, I don't know the timeframe on it. So, he's pretty familiar with what we've got going on, and for that would, you know, you bring somebody in that doesn't know, then they're gonna have to kind of reinvent the wheel before they even get to start. I think no one's more qualified than someone who's done the audit. Yes, sir.
Dollar-wise, you look for, um, Brad and Nancy to assist in probably a more active role as the new clerk is coming in and getting their feet wet. But probably as time goes on, shorter the better, uh, his service will probably back up to a certain extent, be more of a watchdog service. I think we always wanna notice that bias on our books as they, as we go, just to, just to stay transparent to the, to the community and, and public in large.
Well, and.
There'll definitely be an asset.
For instance, uh, I don't know if it's wise, I mentioned the city, but there's a city twenty miles from us, that their total budget is twice ours, okay? Their audit cost them, on the average, between three and five thousand dollars a year, but it's because their books are dead. So, if, you know, it's kind of a, it's kind of a trade-off in a sense, but nevertheless, I think it will save us money from.
The initial cost.
The initial, yeah, and I mean, long-term, get everything squared around, get everything brought up to speed, everybody on the same page. It's just gonna free up time, it's just gonna make things easier for, for the city clerk and the girls in the office, utility clerk, all of them, to be able to handle things that, that right now, we can't, we don't have the, and I don't care if you had 30 people in there. Still, if, if things aren't, everybody's unfamiliar with them, and we don't standardize it, to where, God forbid, somebody leaves, or whatever, that they can't come in and we're set up on quick books, this program, then walk in, boom. You know, no more of the cloak and dagger thing. But that's up to you guys, he said, uh, with approval, you know, they could begin immediately. And on the, uh, your assistance in the application process, we need to, we need to move on that, we need to get this deal rolling. So, I'll shut up, you guys mow it over, and tell me which one to do.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and obtain Taylor and Green to assist us on their financial needs or responsibilities that we're just discussing now, and to help on the interviewing of the candidates.
Okay, let me say, I have one quick little bit here. Do we want to put a stipulation of maximum hours per month at this point?
That's gonna be a good idea.
Well, as one of us wanted to say, how can you really?
Okay, do we wanna go one month and kind of tell them to be gentle with us and then, uh, so we stand?
I think we do a motion, I think that the point that you said, Murk is hired, obviously, your responsibility is greater.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? More or less? Thank you, I think we're making a step in the right direction here. Okay. Police chief Jacob Kelly, update on speed limit reduction on Highway 60.
I don't know if that necessarily needs to be on the agenda. I gave you guys a letter, uh, basically detailing a conversation with MoDOT and what I learned from them.
We're not going fast enough on 60, are we?
Pretty much, they said that as long as people traveling through there are driving at, at a comfortable speed, and they will not voluntarily lower the speed limit. So, until the people that are traveling through 60 voluntarily drive slower than the posted speed limit, they won't lower.
I think they would have to take 20 years ago, and a speed limit to be a hundred and thirty miles an hour.
Where exactly is the discussion? Because I know through town, it's 30. At the top, at the water tower over here, it start, it hits 30 and goes to 30 till you get to right in front of simple signs, and then it turns to 40.
Coming in on the west side.
Where it's 50 right now?
Yeah. Because of the accidents happened at the liquor store and.
Where it changes from 55 when you come in the city, we can lower that to 50. Where the 55 to 50 changes, we change that to 40, and then where the currently, where it goes, drops to 40, that would be where the new 30 would be at.
But the, but MoDOT won't change it?
They want 30, at this time, they're not willing to make it. I am pursuing other avenues.
Like hacking your own songs, or what you're doing?
I guess the life's pretty dangerous.
Like they said, it's like they're in control of this.
So, that's it on that?
That's pretty much it.
Okay. Number 10, would be approval of invoice from Alar and Marketing Associates. No, mine, nine. Update on damages and repairs at the cemetery. Need to approve invoice from Quality Remorals Incorporated, about $2,800 for repair to the damage, headstones at the cemetery. Also, there was another invoice that Mr. Bab submitted, I think you guys have it in front of you. He was assisting them with some equipment and repairs that discharge was our. Uh, I am happy to report that all the repairs are done. Uh, they also fixed, uh, two other stones that they found at no charge.
This, this, I, it looked good to me, is this satisfactory with cemetery board?
I, uh, checked the cemetery today, and I can confirm, it looks like all the stones that were damaged have been replaced or, or set back, and it looks good to me.
I didn't see the repairs that they done today, but the others, you couldn't really tell that they were done any damage, I think they done, we'll get them.
Now, that's the question of insurance, are we not covered by insurance at all?
The headstone, because the city does not own them, the stones. I'll check.
Will that come out of them, the cemetery fund?
What's that?
The cemetery fund, the repair?
Uh, one way or the other. Uh, one way or the other, I, I, we really haven't discussed, because there's the checking account and the trust fund that the committee manages, and there's also the funds under the city control. We really haven't discussed the detail of which account that would come out of, uh, so it's hard for me to answer that question. Uh, do you?
You know, at this point, I think we need to like look at all the funds. Why don't you guys give us a, put together what you've got in your funds?
Okay. I mean, our main concern is just getting it fixed.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, obviously, we're, I didn't want this to go on any longer than possible.
Especially coming up against Memorial Day weekend.
Pastor, uh, I went out by there today, and it looked like there was one of the stones, it was one of those little thick ones, but about this wide, it was still lying on the ground.
Really?
You know where we stood, that baby, that little baby stone?
Yes, ma'am.
If you just looked out, uh, toward the west, it was kind of there, in the middle, uh, between the two roads, it was in the middle, but about where we were standing.
I'll, I'll look for that.
Okay. I, I didn't know whether that's the way it was made, uh, because I didn't just get out of my truck and go step over there. So I didn't know, and I thought, mm.
So it's west of where you and I were standing?
Uh-huh.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
West, maybe just a little bit north, but it was just right in that area.
Okay.
And it looked like it was kind of laying on a base.
Okay.
Like the base was here, and the little stone was about, like that, and it was just kind of laying across, the top of it was across the base. I guess I should have stopped to look.
Well, it wouldn't hurt for me to check it.
I think there's one after door, it's like a scroll, they was, and that, that might be, I've seen that one actually. It's a scroll, looks like a scroll, sitting on a base like that.
I've looked at so many headstones in the last week.
Like I said, I didn't, I didn't get out, but I thought all the others were back in an upright position.
Oh, I know the one you're talking about. That's, yeah, that's probably, because I walked around, looked at myself, and I had to leave that.
But that, okay.
It is, like you said, it's about two and a half inches.
It's about two, two and a half inches wide, but it's only about like this. And the way it was laying on the base, I thought, ooh, they missed one.
Uh, I think it's west, maybe, because I had to-
Well, if your ass is dead underneath, it's been that way for a long time.
I didn't get out my truck, I don't know.
You might take work, uh-
I will, I'll check on that.
I would make a motion to go ahead and pay Quality Memorals Incorporated in the amount of twenty-eight hundred dollars. Take it out of the quarter cent or the cemetery tax fund out there, and for right now, to go ahead and, and take care of their, them and all, since they was the kind to respond to us as quick as they did. Then if we find out that there's a certain way, then we can take it and reimburse it, but go ahead and get this bill paid. And on Clyde's, uh, charge and all, till we get a final figure and all, we can just table that for right now.
Does that-
I'm not sure that I caught all of that, I'm sorry.
We're gonna take the, this out of the tax fund that's paid out of down here.
Okay, yeah.
And then we'll figure out where it's going for us to be a reimbursement, we'll reimburse.
That sounds good, yeah.
And then on Clyde, like I say, on Clyde's part, and all, till we get a, a total final figure, we just table it for right now.
Yeah, getting to turn in a final bill on that, we'll cut it through. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Four and outs. Now, it's new ten again. Approval of invoice of Alvar Martin Associates Incorporated. This will, uh, be for Gene Spears' assistance in our ongoing sewer matter. Uh, this is for service period March two thousand fifteen. Have, uh, cost of engineering, secretary and assistant. Engineering comes in thirteen hours, rate of a hundred dollars an hour. Secretary and assistant, eighty, what did I say?
Hundred.
Hundred and eighty an hour. Between that and secretary of assistance, was ninety-nine dollars. The total on this is twenty-four hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-two cents.
That'll be at least one hundred. Pay that at least one hundred.
Yeah, hopefully, since we've had the increase and everything, and all the way, we're showing enough, we're having to take care of this. I don't want to come now with this hundred thousand dollar loan.
Can't do that. We're supposed to be present.
Put that in motion?
No, I, I don't think I'd make it.
Never.
I still moved that we pay Alvar Martin.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, number eleven, request from fire chief Kevin Johnson, donate funds to Newton County Rescue for generator life to be available for loans to the city of Grandy as needed.
This is like a, we see on construction sites, the generators on the two-wheel trailer with the crank-up tower, and the search and rescue team, basic, they've run off of donations, even though they cover a foot-for-state area. And they called me and asked if we could donate real money towards this. They've already bought it, but they'd like to recruit some of the money. If Jim had a big water leak, instead of tying up a fire truck, for lights, we can call and get that down here. Victor needed it, like we did the list, uh, main road station a few years ago, and we had fire trucks down there and hit that whole area.
Was that going to be about training or?
I would, I would suggest take it out of our training fund. There's twelve, six thousand dollars in there, and most of our training is free to us now. And I'd suggest just pulling some out of that, that way it don't, it's there, and it really won't be missed, I think.
What amount are you proposing?
Kevin, how much is this thing, just to buy it?
Uh, I, they're probably five, six thousand dollars.
You're gonna say it was five?
So, we're not having to store it, and having it available, any kind of, uh-
And where would it be housed?
They, uh, they keep a lot of their stuff, their boats, uh, at the EOC, at Newt County Armory. And they keep some of the Newton County ambulances there on South Main Street. They have two buildings there, they keep some of their stuff there.
Okay.
But all we got is call, and they've got people to get it here. And if it's at Newt Shells, I can use them for that building myself, maybe, if we have to.
So this is Newton County Rescue?
They're, they're, uh, search and recovery. It's the dive team, uh, they go out on, if, uh, people wander off and get lost, whether it's a child, or an older person with Alzheimer's or something like that, they go out.
There's some of them that are, where, where their equipment is at.
Yes, some of them, you know, they're, they go everywhere.
So you're saying a hundred and a half, two hundred, or a half? I make a motion to go ahead and allow fire chief Kevin Johnson to donate funds in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars to Newton County Rescue, where a generator light will be available for loan to the city of Grandy as needed. Take it out of the quarter cent training fund, out of the training fund. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Four and outs.
Do you need to amend the agenda?
Yeah, we need to, uh, add a little something here. We've got a, uh, leak that's fire-fishing. Mr. Johnson, we got a few-
Pictures, I think that roof was split right, but it didn't come out good.
At this point, you go, I'll make a motion, and then we can-
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda as proposed to-
All in favor? Four and outs. Here it is. There's my group.
The other day, during the little damn fours we had, myself, the day we were in the station, we heard water dripping. So we went upstairs, and it was coming in around one of the big exhaust fans. So we put a bucket, and I, uh, I contacted, uh, Jim Dooley, Dooley Roofing, he's done work for the city before. He came down Friday, and he got on the roof, and he guys can read, he's got approximately four to five thousand screws, and those screws on that roof has a rubber washers on the bottom. Um, uh, it was been there twenty-two, almost twenty-three years. Ninety-three. So those rubber washers has deteriorated, dried up, and he thinks that is where the problem is, around those screws. He's reckoning them, just to seal them. Uh, his cost is, uh, twenty-eight seventy-five, two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. I talked to the insurance company, we've got a twenty-five hundred dollars deductible. I, I would like to make a suggestion, we just pay out of the quarter cent sales tax and not have an insurance claim. I don't know what you guys think about that, or-
How much, how much is in that tax fund?
Uh, should be close to sixty thousand, no?
They say there should be fifty.
Yeah, at least fifty.
Did he say how he was gonna seal them?
He's got, uh-
Car nut.
Car nut, car nut flex.
That's like they done up here.
Probably, he said-
Nick, that Rockin' G that done that one?
He says it's a thick sealer, that they'll put it on there.
What's the guarantee on it, Kevin?
I didn't ask him about that with him. Do you remember to guarantee those with their phone? But he said the roof, it was an excellent roof, it's on that building.
I wanna say that-
I don't remember what guarantee he's had up there.
Wind made a little bit of dirt.
I think the building flexed, and then all the wind we had, it swans through the last few years. Real hard to have a roof.
That's when he come back and put the reason on that. The Rockin' G, it was the one that sealed it for.
So, you know, that's where we're at on that.
I think Dooley is pretty reputable.
He's even on his seven, uh, foots, but had a, a white water plant. Yeah, he did the white water plumbing, and stayed all of this last, I mean, at the roof rail.
I, I'll go ahead and make the recommendation to go ahead and have, let Dooley, um, roofing, reseal the roof on the fire department. Take it out of the quarter cent sales tax in the amount of twenty-eight seventy-five, and then, plus to get a guarantee on the number of years.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Four and outs.
Do you want to use that, the city phone?
Yeah, follow, yeah, follow the one. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Ma'am?
Didn't, on the fire barn, or, uh, uh, what happened to the M one?
It's took down.
And the name?
We're getting it rebuilt. I ran into a phone number situation like Bill has with Dell Rose. The number I had for the gentleman that does that, every time I, I called him, talked to him, he said he was good. Well, then when I started calling him back, nobody would answer. Finally, the other day, I got an answer, and they give me his new number. He had changed numbers, so, it's in works yet re-
Well, I just wondered, I noticed it here the other day, and I thought, well, it had those two real nice lights and-
Those, those fell, and the company that made those went out of business, but I think I found some that we can get back up, but I've gotta get the information on them. They're, because they're two-foot globes with a base on them.
I just wondered, I saw it, you know, where it used to be, and it really looked nice, and I just wondered. Okay.
Okay, anything else on that? Okay, number twelve, request from Victor, probably, for additional help. Are you wanting something, Mike?
Well, at least a discussion on that. The main thing is, is, you know, we're operating a plant, or, you know, checking it seven days a week, and, uh, I've talked a little bit with Jim about it too, you know, the best way of, uh, you know, maybe utilizing some of his guys to work in rotation, to go out and check that, and, and there's some work in the weekends. We're just, just not the two of us. We have to be a little old after a while, so. I think that's the best way to go at it right now, instead of looking at trying to hire somebody, or, you know, add additional personnel.
I was considering this also, Victor, the possibilities, as a council, and, uh, agree to the overtime that it need to be, rather than hire somebody at least right now. Maybe in sixty days or something, or if, you might want to relook at it, at least right now, if you cover it within personnel, even if it begs an overtime. You're not gonna have to person, at this point. Everybody else have you?
It's mainly just a discussion we just wanted to have. I, I'd kind of put them, you know, different ideas, but, you know, not checking it isn't a good idea, uh, you know, just, just weekend, Saturday, we found a, a dissolved oxygen probe in one of the bases that was malfunctioning, so, it was good, it was there, I was able to fix it, and, you know, prevent, you know, possibly bad discharging.
We need to-
Will they ha- Will they have the knowledge, well, in case something would comes up, you know, rather than say, it don't look good?
You know, you wouldn't, it'd just be specific things, we'd have to, you know, there'd be a little bit of training, you know, there'd be a learning curve, but, you know, still, ultimately, I'm on call, so, you know, and Nancy's really picking things up quick too, so, you know, if I happen to be out of town or something, you know, I mean, I'm usually still available, but maybe kind of have to go down the chain of command.
What you're saying is you just want some live souls out there, so that you and the other gentlemen can have-
Have a full weekend off.
Have a full weekend off.
Spend some time with your staff.
Yeah, and, um, am I to understand then, that, um, if we take it from our own staff, or Jimmy's staff, I guess, then they're, they will be paid additional for this service, would they not?
I, I would want to be, yeah.
Right, I mean, we're not just gonna assume that-
Correct.
Okay.
Here's something that I thought, uh, and obviously, we, we've got to do something. You and Jim get together to kind of maybe work this out. It's gonna be summertime, hopefully, uh, with all the mowing, and, I mean, I would hope that we're gonna have a list of things to do, a lot along, in both you guys' areas there. If you guys could get together, try to work out some schedule. And obviously, like I say, it's gonna take us a couple weeks to know what we can spend, because at this point, we need to see hard numbers on what's ready, increased, increased in ready. But if we possibly, if we did hire someone, that you, Jim could use, set up a schedule, you could use, set up a schedule, fund this like out of both departments, some out of yours, some out of his, and, because at this point, I mean, I know both of you are stretched thin, I mean, he's got a new guy that he's trying to get up speed on everything, and with the, the trash truck takes up, so that's another discussion for another day, and I doubt I've got to alleviate some of that, but, uh, you guys get together, hammer out of an idea. Like I say, at this point, it's kind of premature knowing what we've got to spend. Uh, we do have, like I said, the end of the year coming up here, pretty quick fiscal year. But I know you need help and bear with us, and I know you need help and bear with us. See if you guys can't get something to work together to get you by here for the next, till we can get up on our feet, know where we stand, I mean-
So what would you think, just utilize some of those guys right now?
Well, why don't you guys sit down and have a good discussion on who and what, what what and where, because, you know, obviously this is gonna be a very important task. And I want to make sure that we've got the right person in there and it's taken seriously. And I'm not saying anybody wouldn't, but I just, I want you to feel good about it. Because if you don't feel good about it, I ain't gonna feel good about it. And I don't, you know, I haven't been going out and looking for a conversation with the D N R and E P A, after they need me, they'll find me. But, uh, we want to keep on track of where we're going, but we want to make sure.
Yeah, they had to tell them the papers due before they helped, but.
Well, I was gonna add this, I know that you're gonna have to end up investing probably overtime hours, because you can't take away from your hours and your hours and try to make something work, because there's so much, there's, there's a certain amount of work that's gotta be done, so many amount of hours it's got to put into it. You're looking at overtime hours.
It would cut back Lance and myself's overtime too, if we had somebody else out there.
Okay, so you guys are already working overtime hours.
And ultimately, the goal we all want to see, when all this comes to square, you and Lance ought to be able to pretty much handle this on rotating deal when we get all these issues that are just compound.
Going as far as the weekends or?
Yeah.
So you just have somebody take off two days a week and then work the weekends or?
Yeah, time you could rotate or however you guys could work that. I mean, after we give the task due up front, so I realize we can't do that now. But I mean, I'm looking down the road here or whatever like that.
Just between the two of us, I mean, I'm not real game for that. I prefer more weekends. I know he's a family guy too, but, uh, you know, I don't mind the short term, but I left a job to get away from working weekends, so, truthfully so.
Well, we'll have to do what we got right now, but you guys get together and see what you can hammer out, and we'll see what we can do. And I'm sure we can make a little something.
Are you looking at a wastewater pole or a breathing stamp?
Well, it depends on how many of the inflow infiltration type jobs that we want to try to take on, uh, you know, as far as uncovering buried manholes, televising sewer lines. It just depends how far we can try to go with our personnel.
Is that far, how far we're towed, we have to go?
Well, yeah, we know how far we have to go, but whether we're trying to deutilize outside contractors for some of those other jobs. But, uh, yeah, right now it's definitely a too many show right now during the week. And then on the weekends, we're spending at least four hours a day on the weekends if there's no problems per day.
Is there any incentive using outside contract for weekends?
Uh, well, on the weekends, no, I, I was more, as far as like whether we're televising or cleaning out the sewer lines, doing those type repairs, contractor. I think it's just best to keep the city personnel right now, just running the wastewater pump. So, yeah, I just wondered, as a discussion, start hearing your ideas, Jim and I'll talk some more about it and, uh, keep it running. That was about it. Listen, but any questions?
Oh, there's everything going. Tell me about your day.
We have had some problems with some E coli results. That was due to, we were still running on half a U V system. It's all up and running now. And the subsequent test came back good after it was all up and going. I did notify D N R that, that we did have a high exceedance on the E coli level. Still having troubles with the ammonia levels. Uh, we've made some changes, uh, made another one in the last two days to see if that'll help, but just still not getting real handle on why we can't get our ammonia levels down. So, uh, I've been working with manufacturer of, uh, of a treatment plant out there, trying to get some help from them. Kind of thinking we may need to have some sort of meeting with them onsite with Gene and myself and just really try to understand that system a little bit better. Quite confusing in some aspects of it, so.
I have a talk, you and I have done there, I can see that.
And I know Gene's been working on it too, trying to figure out what changes affect the ammonia reduction, so, still trying.
Don't give up on. Gene, do you have anything you need to add or anything?
Well, uh, what I would like to prevail upon the council to do is to set a, uh, need for, let's say, workstations where we can discuss this compliance agreement and what we need to be doing over the next three, four months in order to implement the request. Because it's, it's going to take action beyond what Victor can provide and what I can provide as an individual. We're gonna have to do things, and I just need to be able to sit down with you and outline a plan of, uh, how we're gonna accomplish what, what they want to see.
What works for you. What day would work for you?
Well, it's whatever day you call it, whatever. Evening, doesn't matter if it's May, afternoon, morning.
Thursday evening?
Well, I will go with whenever we want. I'll go with whenever we want.
No disrespect, Gene, but it's kind of like I have at times as senior moment, you know, just.
Don't own up to that, Jim. Make Bill feel like he's everybody. Would this Thursday work for you?
I'd be fine with me.
Uh, say six thirty?
Six thirty, fine.
That work for one else?
Yeah.
Six thirty, the, the thirty.
Thirty.
That okay? Six thirty tomorrow.
Come on, you listen. Okay, is there any questions? Okay, President of Police Board, Barry Flood, Police Personnel Board has to leave seats.
Just an F Y I, if anybody's interested, let's see it all.
Okay. Any questions, answers?
I would be more than happy to put my hat in the ring to be on the board.
Ladies and sitting all can take care of you on that for that.
As would I. I think I wrote a letter about.
One stipulation, excuse me, if Ms. Lynn says the second candidate, I would throw.
Okay, let's all, let's all play along here now. Okay. Let's move on fourteen. If anyone is, uh.
Mr. Lynn said just throw his name in the air.
Let's drop. Uh, number fourteen, request from President's Police Personnel Board to go into closed session in accordance with R S M O six one zero point zero two one, three referencing hiring, firing disciplinary personnel. There will be two issues discussed in this, both of them have to do with the personnel.
I make a motion to go into closed session in accordance with R S M O point six one zero point zero two one, three referencing, referencing hiring, firing and disciplinary personnel.
Seven.
We have a motion and a second.
Can we have a little bit of discussion on that then? I, when I handed you that, you said you weren't, it wasn't gonna be done today.
Or do you?
Are you talking, are you talking about the vacant seat?
No, we're talking about, you know, filling the vacant seats.
We're not.
We're not, no, no.
Okay, so. So this is, uh, in short, uh, I was simply asking for a period of time for you to, you know, look through applications here. So if you're not going to fill those two seats.
Not, not tonight, not tonight.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Hold the vote, hold the vote. Bill Cooper?
Yes.
Will Barrett?
Yes.
Aaron Hawkins?
Yes.
We'll be going in closed session at eight forty-one.
No, they're gonna be too cold.
Meeting is called back to order at nine thirty-two. The reason for a closed session meeting was disciplinary action. On the report, investigation by the police board and a decision made by the council, Mr. Greer was released tonight. If you'd like, we'll hold the vote.
Excuse me?
Hold the vote.
Joe, Joyce?
Yes.
Dan, Bill Cooper?
Yes.
Will Barrett?
Yes.
And I'm a hawk.
Yes.
In, uh, other discussion in the closed session had to do with the hiring of the new city clerk. That's what the discussion was. This is gonna be an ongoing process, but it is moving forward. There'll be some, uh, more interviewing go on later this week. Hopefully in the next week or so, we will make a decision. If, uh, anyone has anything else?
Yeah, we're gonna, what we're gonna do, we're gonna make a decision on it tonight or? So if anybody's got anything else, I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion's been made. Second. All in favor?